So, good evening to the town and to our fellow planning board members. We're opening the planning board meeting of Tuesday, November fourteenth. At seven sixteen P M. And we have with us uh four members of the planning board. Um Nick Rosettos is here, Yiching Scott. Carrie Layton and myself. And uh the agenda this evening will include a continued public hearing on the Waterfield lot. Um, and uh, a vote on twenty seven church, a debrief on our North Main Street and MBTA three A projects. An appointment of a person to the Housing Production um Plan Working Group. Um, and further financial uh items on the agenda when we get there. So I don't have updates, but I always have update questions. Taylor, do you have updates?
Uh, yes, I have three, three updates. Um, the first is. After a conversation with both Yiching and with Diab, just an update on forty church from where we are a week after our conversation last week. We have a little bit of direction from uh the D R C. That direction has been handed over to the. Uh, to the petitioners, and they will be the ones who. Either submit something or or decide what they want to submit uh by the twenty eighth, I believe it is. Uh, we'll try to give everyone.
The number twenty eighth being a Tuesday, um, that they are to respond to the comments from the Design Review Committee?
I thought it was to respond earlier so that Design Review Committee can meet. And then we decide on the twenty eighth whether or not to give them a special permit, or I'm sorry, excuse me, not special permit. Um, what is this?
It's called Design Review Approval.
Design review.
Yeah.
Um, that's correct.
Okay, so. Do we? Discuss any of the input from the D R C? We don't do that. Okay, that's just an update then, okay?
Though I do, I do. Want to note that um. From my reading of the notes, I don't know if you guys have read it, um, that there are confusing aspects of it that I I and I wonder. Who would be the one to help the applicants get through this? Because. Um, in our last meeting, they had, they had noted that D R C recommended Marvin Integrity. Um, for example, was one of the, one of the aspects.
Right.
And they were correct in that Marvin Integrity is no longer on the market. And so like if. If D R C is recommending something that's not on the market, it is, it is very difficult for them to comply.
What I saw on the website, and I'm not sure we should drive dive into a a deep dive on each of the bullet items, but I did see on the website that it says that. The integrity line has been replaced with a new line that has a different.
Right, so in in some ways, I do wish that the notes. Focused on intent rather than specificity. Um, and I'm just wondering if somebody will help the applicants through this because I am. I think the ultimate goal is to have them be able to have this, this design review. Finished and that they, that is to the satisfaction of design review. However, from the last meeting, it was very difficult for them to seem to communicate together. And I, I'm just hoping that somebody is there to help them through this because I don't want to to prolong this any longer, and I don't think it's fair.
I I think for, the way I read it was that the the preference for the window was because of the historic. Preservation and the sill width or something like that. And so it might be helpful for expediency to have someone. I know Historic Commission sort of signed off on it, but that might be a helpful person to involve so that they can say. We understand the historic sort of look you're going for. This window meets it or doesn't.
I think the task in front of us is to um. Review the information that we receive on the twenty eighth and decide if we want to uh. Apply to our approval, any of the conditions that any of the reviewers, Historic or D R C. Would have requested be applied, and to the extent that we think that any of those conditions are overly specific. Or some other thing that would deem them to be either changeable or. Reinterpreted, I think it's appropriate for the planning board to have one person. Assigned to communicate to the D R C what our position is. It can be Diab, me, Yiching, because you have a good um vocabulary. I and vocabulary for the issues at hand. Um. But eventually, it will be a matter of us approving or not approving or approving with conditions.
Right, so the following. Hold on a second. The, the following couple of weeks are essential for them to be able to respond in a way that D R C is requesting. And I just, I'm just hoping that somebody. Is able to mediate that quickly. I mean, I. I mean, if Taylor is capable, I think that would be great. I, I, I'd be willing, I think. Um, to enter into the fray, but um I don't know if that complicates things and.
No, I think it's helpful to have an interpreter and um, uh, uh, third party communicator.
But I'm not a third party. I'm kind of the final decision as well, right? So I, but, but I, I, I mean, I'm. Happy to do it if it's okay with everyone.
Yeah, I think so. And Nick, it's Thursday, November ninth, from Cheryl Dennis.
Oh, Cheryl Dennis, okay. Thanks.
So today being the twenty, today being the fourteenth and the twenty eighth being two weeks from today. Um, and the memo having gone out on the eighteenth, which was last Saturday, um. Um, and the commitment is that we would be reviewing their plans that they would be. Creating in time for that deadline, um, and approving or approving with conditions, right? At that date. I don't see any reason why you couldn't facilitate the process, Yiching.
I'll try.
Legally, I don't. Think there's any.
The applicant just entered the room.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, they, they've been here. Um.
Um, other?
Other. Other updates. So two, two other updates. One is uh, we had a screening review or a screening interview with. Our A potential Northeastern Co-op yesterday. Uh, it went very well. Um. I will say that we do only have one candidate, so I don't know. So we don't really have an option. But and and that might mean that we don't want to to do it, but. The, the candidate is, I would say, very qualified, an undergraduate student. In the Architecture Program, but has a history in uh, in city planning. Uh, as a city planner, uh, intern city planner for the city of Bellevue, Washington. Uh, she is from Bellevue. Uh, most recently, she worked with the Sasaki Foundation. Uh, working with them on, on urban planning design and urban planning teaching to. Uh, to uh, local high schoolers. And uh, their, their portfolio is, is very. Impressive. I, I would say that their three major skills are graphic design. Uh, lightweight mapping, uh, so we're not going to do, you know, huge mapping studies, but lightweight mapping. And uh, community communication. I would say those three are uh, are, are the strongest skills of the individual. So. Uh, we have the opportunity to bring her to the next. Planning board meeting if we want to interview her. Uh, so that's a decision that we have to make. We do not have to make it tonight. I think. That might warrant a whole conversation, but um, it is something that uh, that we can do.
Well, I would say that if you found somebody who applied, who seems like, and you met with in a virtual screening interview. Um, and that you think they're great, or that you think that they could do the work that you would be supervising and asking them to do. Um, it's fine for her to meet the planning board because we're the. Rest of the team. Um. But I don't know of any reason why we would, if you were happy with the person, why we would say more. You know what I mean? But, but totally, um. I wish I knew more about how to proceed. How would you proceed administratively?
When we just.
Well, yeah, it's mostly, it's mostly H R. So let's just say we wanted to bring her on board. Um, it would actually be uh, mostly H R. The, uh, we do not actually need a planning board vote. To uh, to do it.
That's good, but so maybe Yiching's right, we should meet her. Before?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, the, the, the earliest we could do that is the next meeting, so the, the, the twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, great.
Hey, Taylor, um.
Yep.
I, I was having difficulty locating the link to the packet.
Okay, so something about the packet is that we're moving the packet from Dropbox to SharePoint. So while we are moving, making this move, there might be some difficulty accessing it. Is, have you received an error or something?
No, I just don't know where to look for it, uh, because it wasn't on Suzanne Gill's email.
Oh, yeah, so Suzanne's been out. So let, let me, let me just email the planning board, everyone, the uh, the, the link.
Okay.
Right, I'm not sure if it ever got shared, and I remember.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't get it either.
Yeah, it's possible. Suzanne had, has had, having a, she's, she's out of the office.
Okay, um. So continuing with updates while you're sending that out, um. Uh, did we say that we, well, maybe I'll just wait for Diab. My question is, did we say that we would meet? With the Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee about three A? Just as a joint meeting, either with us and one of them, and then us and the other, or the three of us together, um. To share or to gather their input? I mean, I know they have a seat on the, the Z Rack, but this would be in addition to that. Um, and I was, that was something I had in my notes that we had talked about the possibility of doing.
I think we said it would be desirable, um, and there was some issues about scheduling it.
Well, it's always an issue of schedule, so we'll definitely have to tackle that.
So one thing going forward, I think would be interesting, um, as we head towards Springtown meeting, is that each one of us. Especially with our liaisons, should be starting to present the, the, I think, MBTA three A. I don't think it should come from one person. Um, I think it should start to go around, and each of us needs to establish a way to talk about it as well.
That's exactly right. And we have the twenty seventh in front of the Select Board.
Yeah.
We have the twenty first live at the Jenks in person, and it's an interactive.
So with the, uh, with the Design Review Commission Committee and Historical Review, I mean, you know, Carrie, Nick, like, you know, you can, you can. Saddle up and start to talk about it.
Carrie, are you a liaison to the Design Review Committee?
No, no. For what? For commute, for?
No, I didn't.
Or to Concom or whoever it is that.
Uh, yeah, all the, I'm all the green spaces and then for the Community Preservation Act. Um, I am, which Sally is like kind of your gig, so I do have some guilt.
No, it's not my gig this year. I, 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 I studied it. I worked with a couple of people.
We will share the olive branch, but then I'm the, I'm the Historic Liaison for the Community Preservation Act, but not the. I'm not a liaison for Design Review.
Right, well.
Right, but I do think that and the, the Community Act should involve, you know, in Concom, all the Queenspace folks.
Oh, I'll, I'll present on whatever you want. I'm happy to hop in front of a crowd anytime.
Right.
Well, so Taylor, then I think the thing to do is for you and Diab and me to work um offline. Just try to schedule a joint meeting with each of those two boards. Um, and the specific agenda is to hear whatever input they specifically want to deliver to us, because they are. A fellow board.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, and then, um. I don't know if it's confirmed that we're meeting with the Select Board on the twenty seventh to present.
It is. We are on the agenda.
Great, thank you. Um, those were my update questions. I don't have any other updates.
Taylor, you said you have three, that you had.
Uh, the, the final update that I have is about a plan for social media on um. On MBTA three A stuff, but I'm gonna, we, we have thirty minutes to talk about MBTA debrief later on in the meeting. I'm, I'm gonna hold it till then.
Right, and my only other question was about the banner and the town seal, and I think that, uh, the reason I mentioned the town seal is because. Our graphic artist, Reagan McCain, has decided to try to um, improve the graphic. Uh, clarity of the only original that we have, which is a highly pixelated digital file. Um, and so that is happening. Coincident with the banner, Taylor?
Yes, so um. Possibly, hopefully, contract for, for that, yes.
So is the planning more contracting her, or is it, is it the town?
No, it would be, it would be the town manager.
They were thrilled to have somebody being willing to do such a thing. Because it's, it's a very detailed uh, town seal, and it's quite a blurry image. So um, time check seven thirty-two, so this is now time to call to order. Um, uh, the public hearing, the continued public hearing for Waterfield Center Business District. Uh, permit application, building permit application, number eighteen for the Civic Development. Um, and I understand that we're going to hear the developer's response to the two peer reviews. And get an update on changes to the design coming out of um, the fire department's recommendations. Is that correct?
Do you need, do you need a motion to open?
I do.
Uh, before, before the motion, sorry, I just want to give an update about, and, and sorry for the, you know. Diab's not here and he was the one. So tonight, the, the, tonight we are going to open the hearing. We're going to put. Uh, I'm going to talk about some updates because there is no presentation tonight. But there are, um, because of some design changes that have been, uh, that have happened. And so I'm going to give some, some, some updates, but we're going to open the hearing and it's, we, we have fifteen minutes and then we'll. We'll uh, continue it to next meeting on the twenty eighth.
That's very helpful, Taylor. So do I hear a motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion to open the continued public hearing for Waterfield CBD number eighteen.
Second.
Good, thank you. Um, great, the meet, the hearing is open, and so, um, who do we have here?
Yeah, so, so the, the developer is uh, Civico. Uh, will not be presenting uh, their response to peer reviews tonight. The reason for that is because. Last Thursday, the developers came to the town. There was a meeting between. Myself, the Town Engineer, Matt Schuman, the. Um, Town Manager, Beth, Beth Rudolph, and the Fire Chief to make sure that their updated designs will meet fire code. And we came out of that meeting, uh, there had been some slight changes to the. Uh, to the, to the building such as moving the front of the building a little bit back. And adding a hammerhead in the back of the, uh, uh, in the back of the building. Um, which has been accepted by the Fire Department. So. Uh, the developers have requested just a little bit more time to, to finalize their designs so that they can bring it back to. The Select Board um, on the twenty seventh. The reason it has to go to the Select Board is because of the, the design changes. Will remove four units. So they will, they will have sixty units and they will, the four units have been removed. It'll go down to fifty-six units. Their intention is to uh, not remove any market rate units. Uh, so, um, but, ex- excuse me. Their intention is to not remove any affordable units and only remove market rate units. So the affordable, uh, the affordable count will remain as it currently is. And four market rate units will be removed from the building. If the Select Board is okay with that, it will then come to the planning board the day after. On the twenty eighth, so that they can show us the new design and respond to the peer reviews at the same time.
Wait, so let me get this straight. The solution is to, when it, at the, where the Commerce Building is now, that side is going to be. Pushed up, is that right? So that there's a bigger, bigger open space?
It'll be, it'll be an overhang.
Oh, so, so the truck can go under it? I see.
Yep.
Um, and then, but the driveway remains the lane.
That's correct.
And the facade remains at, at its point.
That's correct.
Okay, so it still is like a hundred and fifty feet or whatever it, it was that, that triggered this. Okay.
Yep.
I see.
Um, and, and Taylor, was there an impact on the parking?
No, parking stays the same.
Okay, that's great. Well, so we will look forward to seeing that on the twenty eighth, and um, thank you, Taylor, for the. Um, uh, update on that. I guess what would happen is, once we see that design. We then have the op, the opportunity to open up the design peer review part of the process, which we would hope to do quickly. Right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, I have a question too. With, with these delays, I know that there were some time sensitive. Um, issues for them to get funding and such. Is there, is, is that? Um, was that brought up? Were, were there other things that, that? That triggered this, or that would, that?
So, yeah, so I've asked, and the response that I've gotten is, we feel confident that we can still get funding. I think there's two reasons for that. One is because I think that there's new funding going to be available to, to them. And the second is to acquire the funding that they were going after initially. I don't know what it was. Uh, but to acquire that funding, they, they actually only had to show uh, significant evidence that they're, they were working. Towards progress. I think they had initially came in and saying that they needed to have something, you know, month by month or every meeting or something like that. The criteria is actually just a, a uh, a, a direction towards an, an end goal. Which, I think we would all agree, they, they, they have been making progress.
And to those who weren't at town meeting last night, right, the, the town meeting authorized the Select Board to purchase that little orphan plot of land.
Right.
Right.
Which was an important land, um, you know, ownership change. In a, but it, but it feels like a really small piece of this giant puzzle, playing this whole project together. Um, but it's huge. Um. So. We are closing the public hearing?
And setting a continuation to the same time, seven thirty on November twenty eighth.
Sally, did you want to leave any, any open space for public comment or anything?
Um, this evening, or?
Yeah, I thought we were, we were just allowing a little bit of space.
Oh, no, I'd be happy to open this up to public comment.
Have, have we received any, any correspondence about this project at all?
We received one comment today from the butter. Um, it came in, uh. Recently, so it didn't make it into this, this, this packet, but we did receive one comment. I can bring it up if you'd like.
Yes.
It's in my email, so just give me one sec. Would you like me to read it?
Well, I'd like to know who, who is the signator?
Um, Sarkis Kavakian.
Oh, Sarkis, okay, yes, right.
So, so uh, as, as some may know, Sarkis is in a butter to, um, to this project. And he's expressing his concerns about. Um. About the project. What typically happens when, when I receive emails like this is that we add them to the. List of comments that have been made. Since this one came in this afternoon, we didn't have enough time to put in, into, into tonight's packet. I usually summarize them and talk to them to the, talk about it to the board. Uh, but I had not had the chance to do that one, do that for this.
Okay, well, um, I would um, imagine that you would send this out to the board in the next day or so. Add it to the website, um, compendium of public comments that we've um, received, and that this would be a discussion topic. Um, is it appropriate with, where the author of the letters here to ask them to? Make a comment? Are you interested, or should we just take this up in the next meeting? Because we have time to address these concerns, I think.
Would you be able to scroll to, um, page two?
Ready for page three? I, is there no, I refresh my memory. I can't, I remember the strip of grass behind the building. Is, there's no room for a vehicle to drive between? That delivery truck comment is accurate?
Um, I, this is difficult for me to interpret without plans, um.
Right, I just don't know if anyone remembers. Will there be? A roadway between them? It seems like they're.
My, my understanding was that a butters on Church Street were using the town lot. As a delivery.
Well, I think that I need to have, I need to read this out loud instead of skimming it and.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, we, we maybe need Taylor to digest this for us and then come back.
I think that this should be on the agenda for a meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, definitely. These are good comments.
Um, any other public comments that we receive. Um, Mr. Kavakian is here. Okay, do, do you want me to ask him to make a brief summation?
Yeah.
Hands up, yep.
Taylor, you can.
Yeah, Sarkis, you can unmute yourself and talk.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how you guys doing tonight?
Good, good, how are you?
Thank you for your time. Uh, I appreciate Taylor. I appreciate you putting it up on the screen for everyone to see quickly. Um, just to quickly synopsize some of the points. Um, we've vocalized them in the past. We wanted to formally submit the letter to make sure it's heard on these points. Um, it is, to our knowledge, the previous point you guys were discussing with the roadway behind the, between the butters and the proposed building. That there isn't a significant passageway to that point. There's also a bunch of other concerns that we have in here that we're more than glad to go over. With the board or any other review boards regarding those concerns. Um, if we can quickly, Taylor, if you wouldn't mind going to page two for one moment. Uh, several concerns on, on this point that we can dive into in deeper detail, but. The setbacks is another large concern of ours. It is to our concern being five feet away from our building. Not only the safety hazard, not only the, the potential for any fire and, and that nature. It's also just having that structure being so close to us. Uh, so there's a couple of things with the design and the exact. Relation to our building that bothered us, and we would love to have an ear either with Civico or yourself, or whomever would be the proper. Board to speak with.
We shall arrange for that to happen.
I greatly appreciate that, and we're looking forward to moving forward with you guys at Civico as well, and making sure that we can be heard on this topic.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for putting all of your concerns into the public record like this. And Taylor, you and Diab and I will work on scheduling a meeting, probably also with the Town Engineer and Beth. Um. To have a chance for all parties to talk.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Kavakian.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else attending the meeting who wants to speak on, on the, as part of the Waterfield? Civico Project um, Public Hearing? Any hands raising? No? Comments from the board? Well, I think the meeting on the twenty eighth will be productive, um, because we will see, um. The new plans that day, is that correct? No.
Uh, yes, we will see new plans on the twenty eighth.
Oh, no, that's for the, that's for the, that's, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's for the Forty Church Project. Um, but what we can do on the twenty eighth is discuss the, oh, we will have new plans for the Waterfield Project on the twenty eighth?
That is correct.
Oh, that's great, okay, that.
I, I would just say that the uh, of the concerns about parking is also echoed by other.
of the concerns about parking is also echoed by other butters, the I guess the owners of the former patisserie uh uh are concerned about having public parking available to their tenants.
There is public parking as part of the project, and I don't have off the top of my head, maybe Taylor does, the um number of public parking spaces that are being provided in the the area that is currently the Waterfield Lot. Um in addition to the resident assigned spaces, and if I'm not mistaken, the resident assigned spaces are one level down from a street level. And the public spaces are at street level under the building and not under the building in those few spaces that are open to the air and that it's not as much parking as there is now, but uh it's a significant amount. It's it's like I I don't want to do the numbers because I don't have them, but it's a significant amount of the property is de- dedicated to public parking. That's one of the reasons we're removing the Chamber of Commerce building to free up more public parking. So but those details are definitely um worth clarifying for the public if they're concerned about it. But I don't know that there's a chance to add more parking at this point in the design. Everybody has proceeded with to this point with the understanding that what they've proposed um is is good enough, I guess, would be the expression that you would say.
Sally, if you want a motion to continue the public meeting to the twenty eighth, I'm happy to make that.
I would appreciate that.
So I make a motion to continue the public meeting for um Waterfield. Um CBD number eighteen to seven thirty on seven uh November twenty eight.
I second that.
So moved. Thank you. So.
Roll call?
Oh, roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Nick, Carrie?
Aye.
Eching?
Aye.
And I say aye, aye Sally Dale. Um so we shall do so. So we would move now to the twenty seven church agenda item?
Uh housing production plan.
Oh, I must be looking at an old printout. Sorry, thank you.
It's on the screen to Sally.
I know, I I had it on my on my desk too. I have an old one. Um Taylor and Deab and I discussed this, that it it has been requested that a member of the planning board um be uh take a seat on the working group for the housing production plan. Is that correct, Taylor? It's a working group?
Yes, yes, it is. And we have members of the housing production um group here that if they want to help us come to let us know exactly what we will be appointing someone on, but we will be appointing one or two people um to to join the um to join the group.
Um can I invite John Sevier and Marty to unmute themselves?
Yes.
Hi, John and Marty. So John, perhaps the most useful thing you could do is tell us um about the status of the working group and um um uh the work that needs to be done and by the deadline in, I believe, January?
No. Uh I am my understanding is they're calling this an advisory group. The first meeting will be in person on November thirteenth, I believe, which is a Wednesday. Subsequent meetings will be by will be by Zoom. Uh I don't have the Beth Rudolph's email in front of me, but they're asking for uh you you know, either one or or two representatives from a number of town boards. Uh the Housing Partnership Board representatives uh will be Michelle Bergstrom and Felicity Tuttle. Uh the subsequent meetings will be by Zoom and it will meet. Uh I think Marty, you can, I believe, is there a liaison from the uh Affordable Housing Trust as well?
There will be one. We have not. Our meeting is on Monday, so we will take care of that next Monday.
And uh I think the subsequent meetings will be by uh by Zoom. And it will meet periodically. Uh I don't think Marty, is there a deadline for the? I think the housing, if there's a deadline for the housing production plan, it's more this spring sometime. Uh the consultant or the outside support will be from the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission.
Okay. Um so do we have a volunteer from the planning board who would be willing to work on this? The planning board was a major participant in the production of the first housing production plan. Um and it's, John, fill this statement out more in more detail, but it's a requirement of the Commonwealth that we keep an up-to-date version of this document on hand and that we're working towards its execution. Is that right? John?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure what your question was.
Having an approved for housing production plan um is one of the criteria if towns want to have safe harbor under chapter forty B.
Oh.
So I think the main reason, uh one of the reasons to update the plan is to establish an annual goal for the towns um increase in affordable housing units. And um to try to meet that goal and outline strategies and then if some particular things happen, then the town could be eligible for safe harbor.
Interesting. And the group that created the first edition of this document was the planning board, the select board, the housing partnership board, the Affordable Housing Trust. Um who am I missing?
Yeah, this the select the select board really has the lead for this.
Okay.
And it's submitted by the select board. Uh the two select board representatives are Michael Benton Court and John Fallon.
Okay.
And there there was a lot of community input the first time, which I assume M A P C is making that a part of the process as well because uh part of the discussion is with members of the community about housing needs and where is most appropriate to um try to develop affordable housing.
Very interesting. So it's going to be an M A M A P C facilitated one or more uh open, you know, community input sessions? Like we've seen with other projects for the planning board?
I think that when the first meeting happens on December the thirteenth, they'll lay out the process. I'm not really clear exactly what process they're proposing.
Um well, I do understand that it's been requested that one or two people from the planning board work uh or join this advisory board. And my question is whether any of the
I I'd be curious about it, except that I think if the timing is till the end of next year, both Sally and my terms are up and the seat might change. And so it would be a disruption um should should our, you know, seats be replaced?
That would be.
Uh I mean.
Carrie, Carrie, Nick and Deab have a more continued next year.
I don't know. I think you guys could do it. Uh I mean, we the you know, we could worry about that when the time comes.
All right, well, let's do um a email conversation over the next two or three days so that we can get an answer back to uh is this, is it the select board, John, who is requesting the appointment?
Yes, uh the town manager.
Oh, the town manager.
Yeah, it's 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 actually me. I'm the one putting together the uh the the group. But um just just that 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 everyone knows, Deab has expressed interest in in doing it. He does want everyone to know that he's worried about taking on too much of a leadership role from for speaking for the planning board to other boards and in committees, but he'll do it if and he's even happy to do it if he's the only one. Um but he wants to open it up to other people if they want to take it.
Well, you know, each.
What what are the uh what what are the responsibilities or what is involved?
You said they meet by Zoom. How often again? I forgot what you said.
I can, I have it to Taylor if you I haven't pulled out.
Okay.
You see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I just went back and uh found and looked at Beth Rudolph's email. I mean, she doesn't give a particular schedule. Is that what you've got here, Taylor?
There is a little schedule here. Um December thirteenth begin.
The town led tour on the fifteenth. Look at that.
Oh, town led tour. Oh, fun. Um and then future TBD dates.
Public workshops, focus groups, two drafts.
That that's cool. That's it.
This summer of two thousand and twenty four.
Right. So Eching, I want to say that um if 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 your term is not continuing beyond the March twenty twenty four election, that shouldn't preclude you from adding value to this advisory group while you're on the planning board. And that if you're interested in joining Deab in that effort, I would be very grateful and supportive of that.
Okay.
So um
Great.
That means a yes?
Um, yes.
Okay, so Taylor, you have two people now.
Think you have to confirm the votes.
Oh, the planning board has to vote on it. Okay. So roll call vote, the the motion is to appoint Eching and Deab to be the, oh, I can't make the motion, can I? You make the motion.
I move to appoint Deab and Echang to the housing production committee.
Plan advisory group.
Advisory group.
Is it what it's called? Second?
I second it.
And roll call vote, Carrie?
Aye.
And Eching?
Aye.
And Nick?
Aye.
And I say aye. Um so that's great. And um John, you mentioned that the first group is um the first meeting um with is on November thirteenth, which was yesterday, so. You meant December. Okay, well, that's. Yeah, okay, terrific.
I'm I'm having trouble with days of the week and months of the year.
Well, you can join me in having trouble with what year we're in. Um so going back to then that takes care of that agenda item, is that correct? And we can go back to looking at the agenda again, which I my printed copy is not in the right order, obviously.
So for the capital debrief, uh Deab had a presentation prepared for everyone, so not going to be able to fill everyone in on what he was going to say because I don't know. But the capital D, yeah, I I I think we should skip it just so you know what it is. The capital debrief is uh Beth did a presentation at the select board two weeks ago about capital projects that were coming up, being voted on currently, town meeting. And uh capital projects that are going to be on the on the list of things to do next year.
Okay, and and Deab sits on the um the capital planning committee um as a voting member, I believe, and it's a it's 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 a it's a it's a statutory thing that it's either the chair or a member, I'm not sure, of the planning board is a voting member of the capital planning committee. As far as I understand, and um so we will look forward to his presentation. And actually, if if each of us can find the video of Beth's presentation to the select board from two weeks ago, we can watch it. Um because it would be good to know. I do know of coming out of town meeting and each you would have heard this. Um there was the referral to the term um capital crisis. And I don't know this the underlying meaning of that word, so I think my only supposition would be that that there's a there's a is an identified very high unfunded capital need in town. Um and that's that's something that the capital planning committee struggles with every year. Anything else? On that, Taylor?
No, I I'd send uh you have the presentation by email or Beth's original presentation by email. If you'd like me to send it again, just let me know.
Oh, okay.
We'll 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 review it all next time.
Okay. And as far as the budget, I did see, Taylor, that you sent out a a spreadsheet. Um and it came into us from SharePoint, is that right? Your the new thing that we're using?
Yep, that is correct. We'll we'll cover it um as an agenda item later on today.
Later on tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I see, because I'm going to go on. Very sorry, sorry. Thank you for putting it back up. So twenty seven Church Street and Taylor, you gave us a uh a planner notes on this project. You want to read that into the record?
Yeah, I'll I'll read the planner notes in. I don't believe that our petitioners will be arriving until eight ten, but we can start the conversation. Uh we can start the conver- the conversation now. So towards twen- twenty seven Church Street. This is a CBD uh design review. Uh the petitioners of twenty seven church, also known as bespoke, are seeking to construct an as-of-right one-story addition of four hundred and forty-eight square feet. At the rear of their existing three-story structure, this law is located in the CBV and thus is subject to the requirements of seven point three of the zoning bylaw. Additionally, twenty seven church is designated as a historically significant structure. The petitioner's application was first reviewed by the planning board on Tuesday, July twenty fifth twenty twenty-three, with the planning board granted waivers, determined that submission requirements outlined in seven point three point seventeen were fulfilled. Historical has voted unanimously to approve this project. D R C has voted unanimously to approve this project. As the special granting authority, the planning board should vote on the approval of the design review for twenty seven church at this meeting. And I have documentations for reminders, mind refreshers.
Now, you mentioned that the applicants won't be here until um eight ten, and I would like very much to hear from them. Um as we look through their drawings. Um so.
Do we uh update the minutes or what do we have to you have to approve minutes?
Yeah, we do have minutes we can approve. Again, if you.
Hold on a second. We didn't. We didn't get to see these drawings or anything.
This is our first chance to see them and they were in the packet that we just got.
Okay.
Through the packet. Let's go through it.
Okay.
Let me see if I can rotate this while my screen is being shared.
I was trying to do that too, and for some reason it won't let me.
What about if you unshare, rotate and reshare? Oh, look at that.
There we go.
Let me just rotate them all now so that I get it out of the way. Oops, wrong way. Hi Sasha, sorry, I didn't see you there.
No problem.
Um everyone, this is the the this is our 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 petitioner.
Good evening. Um my name is Sasha Durand. I'm one of the owners of twenty seven church and I'm joined in the room by Tony Chisholm and Melinda Guglietta um who are co-owner co-owners of the property.
So this is our the planning board's first opportunity to see the drawings because we had a delay in getting the packet to us this week. Um but I will say that having looked at them earlier this evening that um I I was very pleased with what I saw, but I want to hear the thoughts of the planning board as we go through each page and um hear whatever comments you have to make about each of these elevations and the plan itself. So let's see what sheet are we on now?
Would it be possible for the applicant to walk us through the um drawings at all?
Absolutely. I I didn't know what was appropriate here. Um so on the drawing that we're on uh right here, you will see in the upper left-hand corner of the building behind the existing garage. We are proposing to put uh the one-story addition um onto the structure. Um it does not project out beyond the existing facades. Um and it is not visible um from either Dick Street or Church Street. Um in addition. Um, in addition, um, we have proposed some fairly minor um, exterior renovations to the existing structure. Um, also on this uh, drawing um, number uh, detail number two, you'll see that we've put a railing um around the existing garage area. Uh, that is the the one story next to the addition that we're proposing. Um, as we move on to the front elevation, um, we have um, we have some historical photos of the structure. And we've have seen in these photos that over the years, there's been a lot of detail to the original um, the original architectural details of the building. Um, and our intent is to uh, restore some of those details. The historic commission and the design review board members were uh, received these um, these proposals very enthusiastically. Um, if you want, I can go through them, uh, but they're simple details like adding uh, some of the the fish scale type um, uh, shingle details between the windows um, on the second story of the front elevation. Um, restoring, yeah, restoring um, some of the the corner boards that were original, the water table. Um, and probably most significantly to the front elevation is that the existing um, the existing roof over the entryway is just a a flat roof. Um, looks very seventies-like, uh, similar to the the garage itself. Um, so in order to try to architecturally um, bring these, the the addition, I'm sorry, the the garage um, into architectural keeping with the existing Victorian. We are proposing to put that little swooped roof over the entryway. And that is a a copper roof detail um, to try to integrate those two architectural details there.
And the windows, um, the upper half, so they're they're sort of, I would call it an ornate over two, because I don't know what to call the design of the upper half. But is that reproducing something that was there before?
All of the windows are existing, and we are not proposing changing any of the existing. Uh, the only thing that we are changing on the front facade, again, is um, the addition of the railing on top of the garage. The swooped roof over the um, entryway. And on the front facade, it's really about um, changing the existing clapboards are are shingles, rather, are in poor disrepair. So when we replace them for maintenance purposes, we're proposing to um, to add back in the um, you know, the fish scales and the the corner boards and water boards, but we're not changing any of the windows.
Great. I didn't realize those were what's there. It shows that I need to look more closely at my built environment. Um, so, okay, and is there a a next drawing to rub to walk us through?
Uh, the next drawing would be at the top, you have the dicks, I'm sorry, the top, we have the uh, rear elevation. Um, you really can't see any of this because of the neighboring um, the neighboring house there is actually much higher up on the hill, and there's a retaining wall there. Um, so the existing peaked roof is uh, on the left-hand side is the existing structure. And where you on the right-hand side, um, you'll see where we have the addition with the skylight. And for handicap access, we are adding a ramp back there.
Okay.
Um, and then on the bottom um, bottom rear elevation, um.
Dick Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is the Dick Street. It, I'm sorry, it is labeled wrong. We just picked up on uh, the bottom elevation is the Dick Street elevation. And the only difference on this elevation between what is existing and what is proposed is again, that swooped roof, which is the standing seam copper and the the railing detail. And otherwise, it's, you know, freeze boards and um, everything on the the front elevation.
Can we go to the plan?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Can we? I was just wanting to sign the plan. So, yeah, I noticed that the garage, the garage facade is a brick facade, and then the um, the addition is a uh, is it 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 it's to match existing um, shingles?
It is a, the addition is a um, wooden clapboard.
Okay. So.
And.
That's matching the exist- the existing fabric of of the existing building, right? I just couldn't read from the elevation whether or not it was an offset from that brick, but it from here, I I get it. It's.
Yes, it's offset by two feet.
Yeah, okay. Great. So it's just gonna dive into that brick and then be done.
Exactly. Um, and with that uh, two feet uh, recess back there, it's also helping to uh, limit any you know, any view from uh, Church Street.
Right, great.
So and as far as the purview of the planning board goes, we don't actually have purview over the interior other than to opine. Um, but uh, we we have purview over the design changes to the exterior of CBD buildings. Um, so we can admire your work.
Why, thank you.
Well, it's a complex building.
Yeah, it it looks great. I um, is there a signage is um, part of this that we're we're trying to look at? Where is this?
At this time, there is not. No.
So planning board discussion. Thank you, Sasha, for that walkthrough.
Yes, thank you for your time.
I'm just scanning some of the comments from DRC and Historical, and it they approved it, but were there any comments?
Right. So do we have with that's part of our packet, right?
Yeah, that I didn't get. Sorry.
No, that's okay. It um, Taylor, are there comments in the packet? Oh, look at this.
See, this is historical.
Twenty-seven Church. They're not visible from Dick Street. That was one that you presented. Architectural features lost.
The DRC would have prefer the new railing over the garage to be lower. The response is the height required to access the HVAC intended planters and to shovel the roof.
Uh, yes, to address your question on that, uh, the existing um, HVAC condenser is um, in the the open area um, where the addition will be going. So the proposal is that the HVAC unit be relocated onto the garage roof. Um, you have set that back in the back so that it won't be easily visible from the street. Um, so you have since the uh, that roof will be accessible for maintenance reasons for the HVAC. Um, the the railing is the height that it is currently called out at.
You know, how how high is that?
Uh, I believe that it's. Yeah, I believe that it was thirty-six inches.
Well, that's that's basic requirement, right? And that's the minimum that it has to be. So I don't understand how DRC is asking for lower.
So just reviewing these DRC comments, I'm I'm not sure I had a chance to see these before today, and if that's the case, I apologize, but um, let's just read through them. Existing materials. Not visible from Dix. What was, what is your response to their request that you reverse the color choices?
Uh, the color choices for the, we talked through that at the uh, at the meeting and they said that uh, they do not uh, technically have purview over our color choices. And we took their considerations under advisement.
Okay, okay. Yes, I know in some historic um, neighborhoods, color choices are more uh, prescribed.
Which is specifically why we um, inquired as to whether or not the historic commission and design review board had to approve our color choices. And they said that technically they, it's not under their purview.
Right, okay, that's good. That's helpful.
Um, I I'm good with it. I I would make a motion to move that we approve this design review. Or just petition.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, Taylor? I mean, not Taylor, um, uh, Nick, do you have comment?
No, I I think uh, I I I would agree with both DRC and Historical, and I think it it's uh, it it's a nice project and which I support.
So shall we do a vote on the motion to approve? Uh, roll call vote, Nick?
Aye.
And I Ching?
Aye.
And Carrie?
Aye.
And I say aye. And so that is an approved design review for the bespoke project. Taylor, does that constitute a move ahead for them?
Yes, it does. Uh, congratulations, Sasha. I'll be in touch again tomorrow morning with more details with you about how to move forward.
Thank you for your guidance and thank you to the members of the board for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Okay, bye.
So Taylor, you want to take us through the sign permits question?
Yep, I'll take us through sign permits. So as as I I don't know if if we all know this, but the he the his historically, the DRC has been responsible for uh, reviewing and approve and and giving the building department their advise, their their advice on all sign permits. Building department is the ultimate uh, uh, permit granting authority. But um, historically, they have moved forward with DRC's revise or advice pretty much verbatim every time. It has come to our attention that um, the planning board appears to actually be the uh, design review committee that is supposed to be giving advice to the building department for signs that happen in the CBD. So this is something that we've that we ha- that we haven't done before. And there are, there are the main question is what do we want to to do about it? And we have two, we have two options. One is we can continue to do it the way that that we have done it before and leave it in in DRC's position, right? We 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 make no changes. I will have to go in and and clarify the uh, the bylaw, but we can do that. Or do we want to um, do we want to take it on as the planning board and say that CBD, we review everything else in the CBD, we also want to review signage?
It seems like we have an awful awful lot to go over as it is. Um, and it seems like the DRC is doing an uh, an acceptable job.
My tendency is to um, look at the bylaws and and if if it does say the planning board, I I would assume that town meeting or some kind of legislative body authorized the planning board to do it. So we could take on the um, the um, design review committee as a an advisory.
Right.
And and do that. And I I think we could, you know, do it under sort of a like um, an eaching rule, I guess. I don't I don't know what you guys call it, but like, uh, just do it without without a lot of fuss if we can. Um, and just get through them. But I just don't want to question whoever gave the planning board an authority and and try to subvert that somehow, especially if it's written in the bylaws.
The problem is is that it's not explicit. It's just suggested.
Can you share that screen, Taylor?
Yeah, I can try to out.
So why now?
Why now? Okay. Um, so the uh, three church, which is Winchester Savings Bank, had uh, applied for a permit. And they just did it in a way that they brought it to me, which made me look into how the process happened. And it made me start asking questions and finding out that this was actually uh, in conversation with our new building commissioner, Tom Kennedy and DAB, we came to the conclusion that I believe it's section nine, I'm gonna pull it up right now, um, does insinuate that it is the planning board? Just give me a sec while I bring it up.
So this ha- who's been here the longest? This hasn't come up in all these years, like just no signage change since.
E- even Janine has said that no one's, that it's never, it's in her however many twenty years, it's never.
Then I'm inclined to agree with you, Ching. We just sort of approve this one and assume it'll be a good decade before we have to think about it again.
Well, I mean, I do want, I do want to see the the language and and I am and I'm in the spirit of love. If it's not broken, don't fix it. Um, but it's good to know with the what the language requires. And if the language requires that the planning board be the signator of some approval.
I mean, we're not the wrong board, I guess.
Right. And 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 I would say that that eachings point is is um, I would support that also, that we are privileged and fortunate to have input from a professional design design review committee. Um, and I will always be very interested to see what their comments are. Um, and if if we're the approving authority, we would take those into consideration. Um, and then we would issue a vote. But Taylor's working on the screen share right now.
I can't imagine that many applicants for sign changes.
It's so interesting because it came, it was such a thing on ConCon because we wanted to educate people about the fish ladder. And so it came up about sort of, can we put, you know, can we label trees? Can we put up, you know, education about native plant species around town? Can we put up information about, you know, the the herring migration and those things? And it all boiled down to like, well, you can't just put a sign up. You know, it's like, but I don't think we knew what the process was. So this could really open some floodgates.
Yes, it could. That would be helpful.
I mean, who approves a cultural center signs? Those are lovely.
Right, right. Because they 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 are along with the um, the sculpture and the art.
And there I do think there is now a herring sign, so. You know, we didn't.
Well, I love the idea of um, conservation-focused interpretive signs.
There's so many interesting features in this town. We should, and yeah. There there was a big push.
So this is um, in the zoning bylaw, Taylor?
Uh, yes, okay. So this is the zoning bylaw and uh, D DAB was gonna be the one who was talking about this, so I'm gonna do my very best. So um, uh, so in the bylaws, it does explicitly say that DRC is responsible for review of signage. However, if we go to CBD rules and regulations or or bylaws, that bylaw then explicitly says the planning board is responsible for all design review. Hmm. So we have, we have uh, one bylaw, this one, which is uh, section, which is section seven of chapter nine, that says the DRC is responsible.
Town bylaw. This is.
But hold on a second. Is is it that the DRC is responsible for all signs in town and then the planning board is then authorized to do it for the CBD?
That's correct.
Okay, I mean, that that's reasonable.
Great. I just want to clarify, what you're looking at here, chapter nine, is of the. I just want to clarify, what you're looking at here, chapter nine, is of the Winchester town bylaws.
The Winchester Code of Bylaws, yes.
Code of bylaws. And 7.3 is a chapter in the Winchester zoning bylaws.
Right, which gives the Planning Board the authority to be the design review for all design in, in the CBD.
Okay, so that, that would, in my opinion, then section 7.1 of the Code of Bylaws would require us to make sure that we, that we, um, uh, reach out to and get back from the Design Review Committee their input before we make any vote on any CBD sign, right?
So that is, that's the, yes, that is what we've determined it says. But I think the question in front of us is if that's what we want to do.
I think it's nice to have their input. I, I think I'd be a little bit, uh, um, i- i- in need of counseling on making, uh, determination about, about signs, although I think there's a lot that goes into it from a design perspective. And, and, and I would welcome their input.
Um, John, we'll get to you in one second. Um, I think that, uh, that I think a lot of us would agree that the DRC advice is, is, is very important. I think we all agree with that. Um, the point that I think DM has made and would like to relay now is more specifically, does the Planning Board want to be in the position of reviewing signs at all? Or should we just leave it up to the DRC? Because they've done it historically and we, I think for the most part, they've done it fine. Um, does the Planning Board even want to be another committee that is now changing the way that it has always happened? Um, and be responsible for having a second, you know, bringing all sign petitioners to a second review.
And, and I think the reason that we're leading to ask that question is because the, the, the zoning bylaw says all design review of, um, for the CBD shall go through the Planning Board. And so the word all would appear to include sign review. And to Taylor's question, um, I don't know that the Planning Board has the capacity or the need to review every sign that goes through the Center Business District as long as the Design Review Committee is doing so. Because they are the, the, the board that reviews and approves signage design in town.
Right. So is it, is it possible then for this Planning Board as well as future Planning Boards to understand that, that they do have the capacity, they do have the authority to take it, but the practice is to give it. And so is that necessary with something written or is it? You know, I just, I just can't, I, I can't imagine something that controversial that, that the Planning Board needs to sort of figure out how we, we take it. And I agree that we have a lot on our plates. But I don't also want, I don't want to undermine that authority either, right?
Did someone say that, that the, the petitioners have to come back twice if the Planning Board, uh, gets involved?
I would say theoretically, yes, because they would have to be heard from the, from the DRC, like they always have been. And then they would have to be heard by the Planning Board.
And actually, they have to come to the Planning Board first because we look at it and then we refer it out to our Advisory Board. And the Advisory Board meets, then they come back to the Planning Board to hear the Planning Board's decision.
There's more work for Taylor at the time.
Oh, totally. It's, it, it makes a cumbersome process. And I think it's been working well now. And it's all coming down to the interpretation of the use of the word all.
So when it, when it comes, when the signs come, do they come to you first, Taylor? And then you go to DRC? Or, well, I guess this is the first time. So would they just submit it to the DRC then? Or go to the plant?
No, they submit it to, they submit it to the building.
And then.
The building commissioner.
Yeah.
And the building commissioner submits it to, if it's a CBD project, they submit it to the, to the, to the Planning Board.
Maybe there is a memorandum of understanding or something like that. Maybe, maybe the council, town council can help us draft it, which is that we, we understand how the bylaw sets it up, but, you know, as of right now, we, we give it to the DRC.
Taylor, did, did, um, Diab say anything other than just pose the question to the Planning Board? Did he say that if the Planning Board agrees in one particular way or another, that there's a, a specific path we should follow to codify that?
Uh, yes. So there's two things. One, Diab has expressed his interest in support of removing the responsibility from where did Sally go? Diab has removed the responsibility, um, with, uh, his support for moving the responsibility from the Planning Board. He also mentioned, and I don't know if this is true, someone can correct me, that the Planning Board has the authority to change the bylaws of the CBD without bringing it to town meeting.
Whoa, that seems like a big deal. I don't know if it's true.
I don't know. So that's just something that he, he said. I don't, I don't know if, if, if it's true or not. Um, but the, the one thing, we, we, we do have, um, I think that what would be the right thing is because of the way that this, that this happened was we have our, our signed petitioner here for three or, uh, Three Church. Um, do we want to review it or do we want, DRC has already approved it?
Or just approve it?
Say, say again, Nick.
With any concerns?
Uh, they did approve it with, with one concern, yes. Um.
Were they hoping for our input on that concern or is it just sort of?
No.
Of this, but it's all.
No, it's the same, same that it always had been. Sorry, Sally, I'm trying to get you back in here. Um, and also just, you know, this, this, you know, we don't even have a system set up for this. Janine doesn't have, it's never gone in the Planning Board before, so. Um, I'll share what the sign looks like. And then, and then I would like the, the, the petitioner has his hand raised, so I would like to let him speak as well. Um, but we have the the sign here, existing Caldwell Banker and go into Winchester Savings Co-op. The, the only comment from DRC was that this, the, uh, WCB section on the left be, be removed. And just keep this section, um, above the windows. That was their only comment. The, the, the design otherwise was signed by, by them. We, uh, would you guys be okay if I let John?
Please.
John, thank you for, for being patient. Uh, you can now unmute yourself.
Oh, no, bro. I'm sorry for raising my hand the first time. I was plugging in my phone and hit the reaction. I didn't realize that. So, no, I, I get where you guys are coming from with the, um, whole DRC Planning Board thing. Um, I've been doing this for two years and in my experience, some of the towns do have the DRC and they're the, the, um, you know, they'll make the decision, they'll give any input that they might have, and then the building department will be the final. Usually the Planning Board will get involved if there's, um, you know, they need a special permit or a variance. So I don't know if, I just wanted to give you guys that heads up. That's usually, in my two years of experience, that's what I've noticed. So I know you guys were in a little predicament there. To be honest with you, you guys have the easy, one of the easiest towns I've dealt with. And I think the DRC would be your best bet because that just takes more off your plate. I just wanted to, I just wanted to butt in and let, let you guys know where it's coming from as someone who's been doing this for two years and sitting at these meetings and I just feel like it takes more off your plate than you need, you know?
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much, John. I appreciate it.
But also the, um, the DRC did have a comment regarding that secondary sign we have, a smaller one with a logo. They said that it would cover up some historical details on that building. And we were just not sure what they meant by that. I know what's in that little recessed brick, brick area right there.
I, I do, yeah, I think that the shadow created by that, that inset is, is, is the detail.
Okay.
Yeah, it just adds a little bit more depth.
Yeah. So I think what the, the company is, it's not the bank, it's actually the mortgage center. So they kind of want people to know that it's a mortgage center and not a bank. Like, that logo is part of their branding and we just feel it looks better with the, um, the awnings there.
That mortgage center portion is pretty evident, though. If you scroll to the right, yeah.
Yeah, you know, some people will read that Winchester, Winchester Co-op bank sign though and automatically think it's a, I, I know it's that's just what they're telling me and I'm just relaying that to you.
Yeah.
So, so I think that this is actually a good example of the type of conversation that we want to have. Do we want to have this, this, uh, this type of conversation with, with sign petitioners moving, moving forward?
No, not really, for me.
Yeah.
Uh, is there anything about us getting involved that changes the level of authority that Design Review has? So let's say this is an attractive sign. It does hide a histor- a, a nice historic element of the building, but it's not particularly egregious. Let's say this is something that is unattractive and Design Review says, I don't like it. Do they have the ability to reject a project or they need the Planning Board to hold up a petition?
So I think that is, uh, first of all, I'm sorry that my computer died. I, I didn't even realize the battery was on like one percent. Um, and I finally got back in. I agree that, um, the architectural details behind the WCB are worth preserving. And it also, it kind of makes the WCB look like it, because it's a single sign, it almost looks like it's an entrance in itself. And it takes away from the, the cornice above the, the main entrance. Um, and as for if this was a different project and if it was something that the Planning Board thought was, um, uh, I guess if we didn't like it, technically in the bylaw, we have the approval in the CBD to modify, to appro- to, to not approve it, even if the Design Review Committee does.
So we're, my, that's my whole point is do, there's no step where we would hear about it, right? So is Design Review without us being involved fully impact? Cause we, I, we trust them, right? Like, they're not going to sort of allow something that detracts from the building. So is there any value add to us being part of the process?
I personally don't think so.
Well, well, I, I, yeah, no, I, I don't think that they have done, uh, um, made it. Uh, so I feel like the charge here for us is to encourage some economic vitality within downtown. So, so if people are more reluctant to, um, to invest or, or maybe they, the businesses don't feel like they have the ability to, to signal to consumers or customers that they, they are present and, and it's, it hasn't been fair, then I think that, that, that would be on us, um, to, to intervene. So I wonder if, you know, if, if it's not, if, if the, perhaps if the applicants feel like they need another voice or, 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 um, to advocate somewhere else, that they, they know that they have an option to come to planning.
If it's a CBD, in a CBD related project.
Wouldn't you think that that would, might be, I mean, I would, I think that that, our, our position is to advocate for good design, yes, but also to or economic vitality. And some, some cases that I've heard a little bit is, are that there, some businesses feel like they don't have the freedom sometimes to, to do that for themselves in, in a way that, that is more attractive. And so I, I wonder if, if DRC and the applicant have any sort of tension that, that, that they know that we, we can, we can be the second.
Is that, is that in place, Taylor? If there's a dispute or if there's a, whether it's DRC feeling like they need backup or an applicant feeling like they need a path forward, is there, do they have a pathway to bring it before us without us automatically being involved in every sign change?
I think we have the ability to make the rule.
Okay, I gotcha. Okay. So it's not, it's not in place now, but so how, so this one is just here because you were like, we should figure this out.
Well, I also want to introduce that.
John, we see your hand. We'll be right with you.
There's a sign book on the website, a town website, Design Review Committee page, and it is a document that's published by them. Um, and I haven't looked at it in a while, um, because I didn't think the Planning Board had a, a place in signage in town. Um, but we can certainly, um,
So I, I propose that when, when applicants come, they, they go to the DRC and that we, we get notifications of, of what happens in that meeting, um, and, you know, and, and that they, they get, applicants get notices that if they find that they need another opinion, they can come to us.
And that's for the CBD only?
Yeah, but as, if it, if it's smooth and, and everybody's in agreement, then go, go forward. We do not have to see everything. Would that be, would that be, make sense to you?
Say that it says all design review except sign design.
Who, yeah. Could we, could we ask town council for how to proceed?
That would be a great thing to do.
Right.
So Taylor, if you can, um, capture that as something that needs to be discussed with town council.
Do we, we need a motion for any of that to just, just set it in stone that this is sort of the, the path that we agree on going?
I don't think it needs a motion. I.
I don't think it needs a motion either. Um, but I think we do need to, what, what should we do about this petition that we have in front of us right now?
Um, well, I say, DRC, I, I, I approve what DRC said and I think get rid of that little sign. And if, if the applicant thinks that they need that sign, I think, I think figure out how to squeeze it into that middle one. But.
Okay, so we have, our, our petitioner has it, wants to ask a question.
Yes. Go ahead, John.
Hello again. I'm sorry about that. Um, so the bylaw states, um, with us having 40 feet of frontage, we're allowed two square foot per square foot of frontage for signage. So that would allow us 80 square feet. And what we're proposing would only be about 64. And so that's where we come into, like, that's where we're having the issue is what we're, what we're proposing is allowed.
Hmm.
But just because the DRC does not like the design of that one, they're not allowing what is technically by law allowed. So that's, I mean.
We do have the. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one, one thing that, that I would comment on is that the break of the, of the flow of the sign into two signs, um, is perhaps, um, dividing of, the unifying of the whole property. Um, and whether the Design Review Committee would be amenable to seeing one sign that goes across the two awnings. And, but I don't know if that would appear to be.
Another, another issue that might, I don't know if this maybe helped alleviate your problem, but no one ever told us there was a design review process. All I was told is that I had this meeting tonight and then Friday morning I got an attachment in the portal. And supposedly there was that DRC meeting on the sixth. And so I didn't see the comments till this morning because I was off Monday. And so like, it was just, we didn't understand that. And they said this was some sort of last hurrah with the DRC before the Planning Board or anything. So just a lot of confusion, that's all.
Yeah, it's a lack of clarity of the process. And in fact, there are, there are three documents that are relevant because there's the sign book. There's the, there's the zoning bylaw, uh, section 7.3. Actually, I can think of four documents. It's the sign book, it's the zoning document, section 7.3, it's the town bylaw, chapter nine, 7.1. And it is the regulations governing, um, the center, section 7.3. And so what I would like to suggest is that, um, first, as soon as possible, which I guess would be the 28th, that we come back to this meeting having reviewed all four of those documents. And.
Oh, God.
No?
Sally, no, I think that that's unfair to the applicant. Um.
Well, the applicant has raised a question of, I mean, I don't, I don't know the documents. And so he's, he mentioned two square feet per linear feet of frontage.
Right. Well, if that's true.
Where is that? I don't know which bylaw that's in.
It's in the bylaws. I believe that's for the CBD district. It's in the bylaws, I believe that's for the C B D district too.
Wow, okay.
So I, then I would think that that would be unreasonable for the, for us to have them remove it. For the purpose of revealing that inlay brick. Um, and the two separate signs therefore. Sort of match the facade in some ways with, to, to emphasize that break between the first bay on the left and the rest of the bay. So it, I did not know that that was the um, permitted um, square footage of the sign. So if that's the case, if that's the case, I would say we, we would approve as is.
I would like to see the bylaw up on the screen, Taylor, and I don't know what bylaw to ask you to put up. Well.
Sally, right here, when it's eight forty-seven.
Sally, I can share my screen, I have it right, I just was looking at it online, let me see if I can pull it up again here.
So, but E Ching, I apologize, I have to ask you a question, what is it that you, you think would be the best step from here?
I would say approve the sign as is, if, if the, the, the by right. Law is to allow more frontage, more, more square footage than what is existing here. And that, that is the design that they are proposing, then I would, I would say that that is just fine. Because the little breaking point of the blue on the left versus the one on the right is to emphasize the architectural facade.
Right, which I do see your point on that, um, can we pull it up, John?
John's gonna be able to share his screen, John, if you could tell me what uh, what number it is, I can pull it up.
Let me look ready, I just had it too, um.
Were, were you looking for the C B D, Sally?
Yeah, I'm on my.
I want to know the reg that says about whatever.
Science and businesses, uh, section four point one. And it is.
Of the town code of bylaws.
Correct, chapter nine.
Document, I want to just find my copy of it because I have written in it. Here it is, right here. Four point one.
So, um, it'll be four B one, uh, right under size. And it says should not exceed, exceed the product of two square feet times the number of linear feet. And what we have is actually fourteen square feet under what is allowed.
Fourteen square feet is quite a lot.
Under, not, oh yeah, we're under.
Right, right, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think their main concern is trying to match up with those awnings, just sort of like matches up, it kind of looks a little different without that. Second sign there without the awning.
Oh, is it, but they were, they were not asking it to remove the second awning, were they?
No, just the second sign, the smaller one there with the logo.
Right.
I, I, I don't believe there was anything pertaining to awnings in the bylaw if I was, if I was not mistaken.
District bylaw, there is a reference to awnings, but it is simply to recommend their incorporation.
Yeah, more like no graphics on the awnings, I think that's their biggest concern.
Okay, I actually never knew this was in here and I really appreciate learning about this, um.
Well, again, that's why we're, that, that's why we're having this conversation now is because no one, no one did. No one knows, no one knows, so.
Someone did, but none of.
At least you guys are like one of the easier towns, some of these towns, oh goodness. They would have kicked me off by now.
Well, so do we want to um, make a motion that would approve on the planning board's part? The incorporation of the left-hand smaller sign above the left.
Um, that, that would be a motion to approve the sign as proposed.
And does the planning board um, have a, a view on that?
That's my motion and I can, I can put that motion on the table. Is there a second?
I, I think the D R C has a, has a point wi, with their comment. Um, but I, I guess it's uh.
Do we have, could we go back to the D R C memo and see if there was a rationale for why they, oh, they just said they didn't want to obscure the architectural detail?
Yeah, it's just, it's just architectural and, and remember, planning board is not permit granting authority here. Right, the, the building, the building commissioner is, so, or the building department is.
Detail, like aesthetically, go a different way, but the projects, the project is not, this is not a problem.
If the, if the bylaw says that.
I, 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 I'll, I'll second the motion, I mean, I don't, I don't see this as a problem project, is it a bit of a bummer to hide the detail? Yes, aesthetically, does it meet our taste? Not really, but. It's, it's, they have the right to advertise their logo and they're definitely not breaking any rules around it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and any further discussion? I mean, I mean, the, the only thing I would add is that, um. It's because it says in, I wish by law does it say it in, in seven point three, that we shall. Have the final authority for all design review and the word all would imply that includes signs. Um, that we have to approve this, um, and then the question is. Do we want to, to be the final authority, which is the question that Taylor posed at the very beginning of the meet, of this discussion? Do we want to be the final authority on signage design for the C B D?
Authority on design that's brought before us and we just hope.
Yeah, the planning board can never be the, 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 this, the permitting authority for signage. It can be the advisory to, the advisory board to the building. Department for design review.
I see, okay, instead of the D R C or in addition to the D R C or in conjunction with the D R C. Right?
Correct.
Because in this instance, um, the, the petitioner is saying, well, actually, there's asking us to do something that we have a right to do. And so they're coming to the planning board and saying, would you feel that we have a right to do this? Is that what, what is happening?
They never even went to the design review commission because they didn't know about that meeting.
No, we, we were just told to come to the uh, planning board meeting tonight and, you know, that was, they said that was kind of a. I forget how they worded it. Um, I don't know if it was a new thing or something different that they're doing between the planning board and the D R C.
Who was the they in that sentence, John?
Uh, I could check that email.
Building department?
No.
It was, it was definitely the design review saying that.
Was it okay, yeah, I, I, like I said, I'm sorry, I have so many names each day and try to remember.
Yeah, John, you're being very patient with us.
It was, you know, that's all I can do in this business, just be patient.
Well. What is the impact of us, um, coming back to you in two weeks? Um, after we've had a chance to review all of the relevant town bylaws and regulations and I'm seeing shaking heads like that's a bad idea.
There's a motion.
Yeah, we, we, we have a motion, we, we can actually continue talking about it since this motion.
So let's do a roll call vote then? Are we ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so E Ching?
I.
I and um, Carrie?
I.
And Nick?
I.
And I say I, so that codifies the position of the planning board. That we are okay with him including the two pieces of the sign.
As proposed.
As proposed, thank you.
Yes, and I don't mean to cut in again, but ninety-five percent of the bylaws I do read, they always say the building department has the final say. So I mean, that's.
So we're recommending to the.
The commissioner could say like, oh, I don't like, you know, that something wrong with that or something like that, but usually, usually they're okay with, you know, the final part. But it always does say they have the final say on, but they usually go by what you guys say, so.
Thank you very much, John, appreciate your time, I will be in touch with you again tomorrow morning with uh, more details for you and next steps.
Great, I appreciate you guys, thank you very much, good luck with everything going forward.
Thank you, John. Ta, Taylor, thank you for um, walking us through what I didn't realize was a quandary.
Yep, so, so my, my next steps will be talking to council about what our options are. Um, and.
But also to make sure that we, we all, he understands too, that there's four different documents that need to be coordinated. There's the, the C B D regs, there's the zoning bylaw for the C B D, there's the sign book. It's on the D R C um, webpage and then there's the town code of. The code of bylaws that is about, that governs signage in the town, outside, anywhere in town.
Yes, that's why we pay in the big books.
So that will be great, Taylor, if we can um, get that put in front of council to um. Determining if we need to change a bylaw, which hopefully we don't, we just can, it, we can issue. Whatever document would allow us to proceed and orderly and all hands on deck and everybody gets it. Process, right?
Yep.
So we skipped the minutes, which um, and, and um, we haven't discussed the budget and. We're right at nine o'clock, or eight fifty-eight right now, do we want to do the minutes now and just? So the first set of minutes we have to review is, if I'm not mistaken, October seventeenth.
Well, if nobody got this packet, then how do we review that?
We don't. I reviewed them between six thirty and seven o'clock tonight because I just got the packet. So, and that was because I reached out to Taylor because I thought I must not have been reading.
Okay, so we can't do the minutes.
No, we can't, so Taylor, you move those to the next agenda. Um, and um, did, do you have, give you a briefing on the planning board budget question?
You, did you just give North Main? Sally, did you just skip?
Yes, I did, I did not mean to do that, so the debrief on the North Main and M B T A three A. Would be the debrief from the Zoom meeting we had on the second.
I think we should debrief on um, D E V's presentation also.
Oh, from town meeting, right, okay, so who would like to kick off that discussion?
Taylor, did you have an understanding of what D E V wanted to talk about?
No, no. I mean, maybe give everybody an update on where we are.
Yeah, I think it was more just having a con, con, conversation, there's nothing in depth, there's no to, there's no. Uh, set topic points, I think this is an opportunity for us, I mean, we have a week from today. We have our first public meeting, still working on logistics there, but I think it's going to go well, we had a, we had a. Email blast go out today to all town meeting members, there will be. Uh, an additional me, additional email going out on uh, next Monday to all town meeting members as an update. There is, uh, E Ching, you sent me an email with a whole bunch of people, they'll all. Get emails at some point this week about with, with an invitation to, to next week. So, so I think right now for the invitation to next week, we have that covered, that is going to go out to hundreds and hundreds of people. It's been handed out physically, it's going to be um, uh, done by email and it's on all of our social platforms.
Right.
Where we've been discussing about what we're doing next, next week. Um, it's going to be a combination of a little bit of presentation, Q and A, and then a interactive. Um, an interactive thing, one is an interactive map, there's going to be a large map, you can come in, you can, you can place sticky notes on it. You can say, I want to see this, I want to do that, it's something that you can kind of play with. The other thing is going to be easels, which you can come up to and also probably sticky notes. And you can see some examples and some ideas of what design, what buildings look like. From a design standpoint. Did, in what zone, so you can expect this type of building instead of this, you know, that whole missing middle thing? We're going to expand that to be a more interactive process on many easels around the room that you can walk around and, and see. Um, we have an hour and a half for that, both, um, both of our consultants are going to have two separate presentations. And again, it'll be Q and A, the first, the, the, the presentation section will be televised, but the mingling around section will not.
Right, is there a way?
Oh, sorry.
I was thinking about the way we used to use, I can't remember off the top of my head the name of the platform, but is there a way to collect feedback from people who aren't able to make it to the jinx? I guess just invite them to email or something, send a letter or whatever.
Yeah, we're building a Q and A, so that's definitely one, one that we can do. One, one thing, one idea that I've had is, uh, sorry, you're, maybe you're talking about co, co-urbanize, I'm not sure. For the master plan. Uh, we can certainly, that's a, that's a very costly program. So we can, we can look into doing, do, doing that again, but there are other ways that we can do. Forms on our own and distribute that on our website, on social platforms and on email. So I think that especially for this tight timeframe for next week, um, we should start with that, but we can look into. Because we're going to get into the budget later, we can look into if we want to invest in something like that.
I, I think Emily um, has a lot of experience in different outreach um, platforms, Taylor. And she may have worked with that one before, she may have um, rec, recommendations also.
Well, I worked at Co-Urbanized, so I know the platform pretty well.
I guess you would.
It's a great one, but I remember it was very costly and we, we used it pretty much, I think we had an option to extend it and we were like, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the master plan, work, uh, steering committee.
Since you know it, you know how to pick the pieces that are sort of the most easy to digest, that's exciting, I think the event sounds fantastic, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I wonder if, um, because we have that big list of how uh, our liaisons and the, the groups and committees that we have. Each of us have been um, appointed or, or, or designated to, to talk to. And this is a, this is a huge touch point, I feel like, right now for us to look at that list and, and. Um, you know, invite, personally invite the, the chairs at least, um, if not the entire boards to, to come and join us. For this, because e, especially for some of the more sensitive boards, is, I'm looking at you, Nick, um, especially for the D R C and, and the historical commission. To, to have that personalized outreach is, is really important and so that we can, we can really say that we were very cooperative. And we um, and act like it, that, that we have extended this multiple times. So, it, this week, we all do that for, and I'll, I'll send, we'll, we'll dig up that list again, uh, if you can't remember who your committees are.
And I'll provide the materials, so you won't have to create it, um, I'll even do the language, you just have to send it to the groups that you uh. That you feel like need to get it, that's all.
I think that's a great idea, E Ching, and um, it's perfect for us to um, leverage our connections across town. To advocate for people to pay, to come to the event on the twenty-first, I love it. And Taylor, that's very helpful for you to be able to um, give us the content that would be the unified message to encourage people to attend. That'd be great.
Goodbye next meeting, everybody should, oh, no.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be before the end of this week.
Right, so it, yeah, so even by, by like Friday morning, Thursday night, um, to, to get something to us. Because I mean, we all know a lot of people in town, so it's relevant to. And the liaison list, yes. E Ching, you said you have that, right?
I mean, it's in, deep in my emails from when we assigned it.
I have it too, so.
Um, yeah.
You want to dig it out or you want me to?
Yeah, whoever can do it fast. But no, it, it doesn't have to be now, but yes.
Yep, okay. So. Going back to the question of M B T A, three A and North Main Street debrief, um. I think where we are in the process right now is really critical to the identification of, in the case of three A. To, to make sure that. to the identification of, in the case of three A, to, to make sure that everybody understands the parameters, and that there is lots of input gathered on the location of the overlay districts. Um, which is, I think, probably the main objective, the main three A objective coming out of, the November twenty-first, and then also coming out of November twenty-third, is getting lots of community input on, on the missing middle, housing forms and, and density and style. Um, and that's, those are the key um, takeaways that we will benefit from having after the twenty-first. That's what I think.
Sounds good.
Did you guys hear any comments after the um, planning board presentation for town meeting? Do you guys get any? Anything?
I got one comment that the concern was that it would be very confusing for the planning board to bring two sets of zoning changes, to one town meeting. And um, I, we can discuss that, but I do think that it's, 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 it's possible to communicate the proposals that we will come to, in a way that will not be confusing and that will allow people to understand what they're voting on. Um, and I don't wanna derail, I personally would not wanna derail the progress that we're making so far, by just focusing on one or the other, but, well, we can't focus on, we can't not focus on three A. But I would like us to keep continuing the conversation and the community gathering and the zoning bylaw work for North Main too. That's my opinion, that's the only feedback I got. Other than that it was a really good presentation that Diab gave.
Taylor, did you get any um, responses about the town meeting presentation?
Are you asking me?
Taylor.
Oh, Taylor.
Um, no, I don't think anyone has, said anything about our presentation. I did hear um, mumbleings in the crowd about um, uh, positive reactions to Diab's uh, presentation. So I think, I don't know what that's content. I think it's mostly just the way that he presented it, and the uh, and the visuals. I think there was a lot of positive reinforcement to, the way it was delivered and the way it looked. Um, so I know that we were kind of on crunch, trying to get that, that done. But I think we should take that as a model of good, good feedback for presentations moving, moving forward.
And I personally am very grateful to you, Eicheng, for.
Yeah, well, it was, it was a build-up from all of you, so, yeah, I thought. And I, I thought the comment about maybe, um, just, just starting to learn how to, how to go around town, each of us to, to present it, and, and to be able to articulate the points ourselves is, is very important.
Well, right, that is exactly right. And I know for me, one of the most important documents that will come up, out of our work is, and hopefully soon, is an FAQ. And one of our consultants mentioned it takes about a month to pull that together. And if that's the case, now is the time to start.
Right. I, yes, I thought Emily was, we, we had hired her, especially for that point too, is, is sort of talking points too, for us when we engage.
Yeah, she did mention she won't have an FAQ ready for the twenty-first, but I do think that, um, the next time that we sit down with them or touch base with them, Taylor, maybe you and Diab and I, then we can tell her that that's a brilliant, and Eicheng makes a very good point, that we need to speak with a unified voice and with clarity about what are the answers to the questions.
Yeah, and it, it doesn't, I mean, I, I think we can still have doubts in our head about how things are, but, to be able to have, be, and from the perspective of now, um, gathering, gathering data from the town to bring back to this board so that we can, we can find.
And bring back to the, the zoning review advisory committee, because they're going to be helping us, synthesize and cr- synthesize input and craft language.
Um, question I have is like the, the presentation to the select board. I, I haven't heard much. It seems to me that Diab is presenting that, and, and I'm just curious.
No, our, our, our consultant Emily is doing the presentation.
Okay.
So it'd be, it'd be nice if we could all be there, perhaps, I don't know.
I, I would plan to be there. I do. But I'm, I'm glad that Emily's being given a chance to discuss it in front of the planning, uh, presented to the, to the select board. I think it did come up today, Taylor, in the conversation, that, um, was it today, yesterday, today, about what, what was the logistical s- steps for the meeting on the twenty-first? There was, just, we just touched very briefly on the question of the twenty-seventh. And um, I think that Emily made mention that, she was gonna do a, a customized, concise and targeted presentation, something like that for that meeting. She wasn't gonna just do what she did before, because it needs to be tailored to the time slot and the audience.
Yeah, I have no idea what she's gonna do, but.
Okay, alright.
But since the select board is so, is very concerned with the, the finances of the town, uh, i- is that the, the, the question of the numbers and how much money, Taylor, are you, that you've been working with best, is that, is that gonna be, available by then?
Yeah, so I have, I ha- I, I now have all of the data. Um, I have ten years, at least ten years worth of every grant that we've received. And now it's just about sifting through it and finding which ones are um, which ones are applicable to the, yeah.
Well, it's finding out which ones came from any of the granting agencies that now are only accessible through, the, the once, is it called One Stop or Massworks Portal? Right? And that's the question, because we lose access to that portal and all those.
So there's that loss, and I wonder about the number of gain that we might be able to get, say, from, economic, if that, if that's quantifiable, if there's an economic, element to it, either in residential taxes or.
I, I, I was thinking about that really hard today, actually. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, but, I think it's a conversation that we can have with Michael from Forum in Place, her, her consultant. I think it's a really, really hard number to quantify, because we, w- w- we can't, I mean, we, we can assume that someone's gonna build, you know, the largest possible thing that they can, but what if they don't? And.
And also the market will tell what the value is. I mean, I realize that the appraised value, is not the market value, but the appraised value is still a derived value based on conditions.
Um, I, I've heard from Arlington's argument, um, that, for, for, especially for part of the FinCom, their, their, their version of FinCom, for them, it was important for them to understand sort of the tax base that, that's gonna increase versus, and the overrides, I, I can't speak FinComese, but um, wha- whatever it is that generates this, this back and forth of um, revenue versus cost of extra people, um, was, was kind of a critical point too. And I, I just, I'm just thinking at town meeting, what, how, select board's gonna react, how FinCom's gonna recommend, and that, those sorts of things, we need to start feeding now, um.
Well, that's a really good topic to bring up with Emily, since she's had such a central role with Commonwealth in creating the terms of this new law.
Yeah, and how, how you might be able to calculate that for, to determine the, the gains or in losses of a town.
Okay. I think that's right. I think the purpose of presenting to the select board is first of all, to make sure that we keep them absolutely in the loop, on where we are with the process and what the critical junctures are and what the next steps are, um, because they're the select board. Um, and we haven't had a chance to present to them yet. So this will be really just an overview of the law and a status report on where we are and where we're going. Um, and the, and the work plan towards complete compliance by December of twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
That, I meant, twenty-four, correct. And does that sound right to you, Taylor, that that would be like the objectives of us presenting to the planning board, I mean, to the s- select board?
Uh, yes.
So I don't know that the question of economic benefit to the town could come up, but I also completely agree with you, Eicheng, that it is research that we should do, and we can talk to Emily about what some, u- useful methods are for doing that, given all the uncertainties, what kinds of assumptions you can make. Okay, so. As for the budget, I did, I did see what you sent, um, but I didn't have a chance to um, really study the document.
Yeah, you don't, you don't really need to, because there is the main, so, so, so the reason the budget is being brought up now, the re- the reason the budget is being brought up now is because we have received um, our budget sheets for twenty-four.
For fiscal twenty-five.
For, yeah, for, for twenty-five. Um, so that will be uh, due soon. I don't know what the exit, what the exact date was, but it's, it's before Christmas, so we need to, we, we need to think about what we want um, to do for, for our budget. So in the sheets that, that I, that I put out, I can pull them up. Um, are the budget from this past year, both salaries, there's, there's two sheets, so there's salaries and there's expenses. Um, the salaries eh, or, or for both of them is this year and then previous years, what we had for previous years. Um, I think since Diab isn't here, I think that the best thing for us to do now is, for you all of the board to tell me how to make this spreadsheet the most, the, the best it possibly can be, so that we can make informed budgeting decisions for next year. I'm, I, I, I can work in Excel just fine, so if we need to see.
You're not sharing right now, are you trying to share?
I, I understand I'm not sharing. So, so, so if we need to see graphs, if we need to see different data, I think that now is the time for, for everyone to let me know what, uh, what's best to see, so that I can start putting that together and we can make more informed decisions.
Right, and a big part of our budget planning process for fiscal twenty-five is to understand where we're going to be, with everything that we're working on now or that we can foresee we will be working on. Um, because we need to budget for that. This is what I opened up, and it's, it's a very long, shallow spreadsheet, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, and I don't even know what the headers mean.
Yep, so that's, that, that, that's why I think the best use of this conversation now isn't necessarily going through every single line item. It's more of understanding that the data is here. We have this year, we have last year, we have all the, all of the budget, since two thousand eleven, two, two thousand eleven? Two, two thousand eleven. So we can look in the budget historically, but this is real, this data is real raw.
Yeah, it is.
So, so, so what do we want to see that makes, that, that makes it easy for all of us to make a decision of, what do we want our budget to look like next year?
Well.
Here to get to the years, for sure.
Uh, we definitely wanna format it, so you can see it on one eight and a half by eleven or horizontal screen, um, and, also to understand, like, what's XFR in Bud? I know, like, column H, last year, transfer, maybe?
Transfers in budget, but yeah, I mean, there, there is.
Right, it just, to be able to understand the headers and to read the columns in a way that, uh, it's formatted, like you said, it's raw data.
Mm-hmm.
So I tried to download this, actually. Is it downloadable?
Yep, you just click on file and export.
Okay, and this is because you're opening it up in Share, oh, you're opening up in OneDrive.
Again, this is just Excel Online.
I'm sorry?
It's just Excel Online.
Right, no, I just, I had a hard time reading it, because I didn't know what the headers meant, and I couldn't see all how, how wide it was. Like, it look, it looks like it goes beyond letter N.
Yep, it goes all the way to, it's because it, every year, we can go all the way back to seeing what our budget it was in twenty-eleven. So one, I mean, one interesting thing that you'll see is that our budget in twenty-eleven versus our budget today has no inflation, uh, re- 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 relation. It, we, we are, our budget is not keeping up with inflation at all.
I would like very much to format this in a way that would allow us to visually and numerically analyze it better. I would really like that.
But I think he's asking what we wanna prioritize. I mean, there is sort of, this is a really granular look at sort of each number, you know, in, out, in things over time. He's sort of asking, what do we wanna prioritize? Do we wanna get a sense of how much our budget has shrunk relative to inflation? Do we wanna see, you know, what are our major expenses over time relative to inflation, or what, you know, that's sort of like, what, what do we need to know about our budget to work better?
Yeah, exactly, and not, and not necessarily just, just inflation, right? We can go to, to our expenses, uh, sheet, and we can see, you know, how much have we spent on advertising over the last, uh, thirteen years, and is this a, is this the right amount of money that we should be spending on, 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 on advertising? Um, so, so yes, making this sheet pretty and readable is, uh, is, is gonna happen no matter what, the.
I don't care about pretty, but readable is key.
The information that helps me the most, or the details that help me the most right now, is that when I go in and start creating that, easy to read um, section, what do you want it to say?
I wanna see, it was, I know it's broken down into two sections. It's the personal services, which it says personal, I don't know why it says personal when it's really personnel, but it's always been that way. And then there's the expenses, and which is the screen we're looking at now. And most of our expenses occur in professional services and very little expenses occur anywhere else. And to your point, the question would be whether we um, operationally, in terms of our operational plan for, from, starting from next June all the way through, um, or next July first, all the way through June of the year twenty-five. Um, are there other things that we can imagine doing more of, or wanting more funds to do, particularly, for instance, advertising? And so you could, you could use that to say communications, and what are the communications plan, and, or what is the communications plan, and what would be the associated expenses? Um, in terms of the other things, I don't know if we've ever.
Funding streams, percent of budget, where we're overspending on things that we could probably like retool, like, um, like, are the, are the professional services, I'm assuming those are consultants, which of them are coming straight out of the planning board budget, and which are, you know, like, where, where are they coming from, capital planning, like, who?
But these are our professional services consultants. Yeah, this is our money to spend on consultants to help us do.
So do we have a total, do we have a planning board? If this is just money into the planning board, money out of the planning board, I don't think that captures the totality of our sort of, I wanna use worth, but I don't know if that's right. Do you know what I mean? Like, we, we touch a lot of money that we don't necessarily have to make and spend. And so I wanna make sure that we also reflect when we have expenditures that are, that are funded from not just, and I actually don't know if I could list off all the correct um, sort of income streams we have.
I think the exercise that the town manager is asking us to do is to kick off the, annual budget for the, each department of the town and the planning department, this is the planning department budget, and it's the, it's the, it's the budget that we advocate for, first to the town manager, and then to FinCom, and, then to town meeting.
Right, so my, my deepest traumatic experience of this is the, the fight that we had with FinCom in the last, town meeting over twenty, thirty thousand dollars. So I want this to, to have a pretty clear picture of, how, how much we need and how much we used um, per year, and, an argument for um, more if we need it.
How far back does this go?
I'm sorry, Carrie.
Twenty-eleven.
To twenty-eleven.
So yeah, I want a really good argument for our ask.
That's what I was saying about knowing our work plan through July or through June of twenty-five.
Right.
What are we gonna be doing? What are we gonna need the money for? What's our plan to use it?
Well, I, I like to see first the data, um, and, uh.
Is this, is this really all of our bookkeeping? Is this, is this really all of our bookkeeping? Like, is there's no sort of accounting software behind this? Is this really like, how do we, how do we keep track? Like, is books and periodicals, there, like, there must be, like, i- i- if you, like, is this a series of additions or, do you know what I mean, like?
Well, look at column F, percent used.
Like, are there receipts? Like, is there? Is office.
Yeah, so, so I, so I manage the budget, uh, on a weekly basis. So, so every, every week I get uh, delivered a packet of this is what you spent this week. And then I put it in, or I sign it off as this goes in this bucket, this goes in that bucket. And then it goes up to the controller and they enter it into the system. But for the most part, I'm just working off of spreadsheets.
Okay.
Except when you're approving invoices from consultants, right?
Well, yes, when I, what, but that still just comes out of professional services. So you'll see here, you know, the, at the time I pulled this, you know, we spent this this much, I, 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 I don't know.
This is what I'm saying with the headers, you had a budget and it says current year memo balance, current year remaining budget, whatever. Uh, i- i- it will be helpful to have the headers um, n- not be so cryptic.
Well, what information do we want, Sally? Not, not, how do we wanna, like, what generally, if you're doing your own budget, are you thinking about?
What, what's your turn back every year? One of them is, is what, how much are we turning back?
Yeah, that's fair, because I see the actual and available are pretty they're more, yeah, so, so are you still? Is the, so the the actual from last year is kind of in like single dollars and cents and the one from this year, is that what we were budgeted for? And then at the end of the year, we get sort of the actual? Like, how?
Uh, yes, that is correct, because you can have, because you can have, um, money can come in different ways. So other departments may give you money. So yes, the actual is what you end up with, yeah.
Okay, and so none of it, so like, so books and periodicals, we must have certain subscriptions, right?
It doesn't appear that we do.
Yeah, so, so the, so there are a bunch of these that are really like office supplies, printing, you know, there, for a lot of these things, we could just make it one bucket. And I'd be totally happy with that, make my life easier. But, but the thing is, is that for the most part, this is just the way it always has happened, i- it's just always been this way, and this is the way Brian did it. So we have, we have a, an opportunity to change it, but when we're working with these smaller ones, yeah, we can clean it up a little bit, but it's really this, this, this big one, the professional services, that's the real one, oh, and then salaries. But the, it's, it's, it's really the professional services that, that, that's really important.
Yeah, so collapse, I mean, at some point, it becomes really hard to know if a cord is an office supplier, a computer supply. So condensing those is like, I think that's, that, if that saves you time, that seems. And it gets sort of, it looks like it gets totaled at the end of the year. So that seems, as long as we, as long as we know how to ask for an increase, if we're coming up short and we know like, why, what, you know, what we need to plan for, that's all fine. And then professional services, is that mostly consultants? Like, what, what is in there?
It's pretty much only consultants, yeah.
Okay, and the consultants are all straight out of the planning board budget? Are there consultants that we have in our sort of larger budget that are funded by other sources? Or is this, this is, or are they captured?
There's, there's the potential for that, we don't currently, but let's say there is a project that we are doing with engineering. Right, we would, we would share that, 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 that budget.
Okay, so that has happened.
Carrie, right, for applicants, they, they fund the consultants that we get.
Right, right, no, I know, so that's what I mean, I, I think it's, I think that's a really, because it's a huge number. It's important to parse whether those are, you know, dollars coming in from permit applications or if that's, you know, like, what the funding streams are for that.
There are no funding streams for any of this, other than this is part of the town manager's operating budget for the town.
Taylor, do you know what I mean, though?
I do, yes.
What do you mean by funding streams, then?
I, I just mean, if we partner, if we hire a consultant, but a portion of it is from engineering, do we have a way to sort of reflect that so that we, so that we, or are we just sort of like robbed of that endeavor? Like, is that accurately, like, can we plan for that? Can we account for that? I think there's a difference between our, our daily budget and our sort of general involvement in the town projects. I'm just trying to capture that.
But also, i- in some of our, especially, um, big projects, we, we're like fund matched by M A P C, is that captured in there?
No, when we get, when we get services that, um, are donated to us from M A P C, they call it technical assistance grants.
Yeah, yeah.
They might be recorded as grants on the grant side of the town ledger, I honestly don't know.
Well, it appears nowhere in, 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 in the budget, grants pair nowhere in our, our, our.
So I don't want FinCom to kinda see that we are generating this much work based off of only what, what has been given. But that, I, I would wanna see that we have been grant matched or whatever, how, however much was received by the state to show that we, we only are able to showcase this much work because of that. Right, not purely from the mere ten thousand, whatever we get from, from the town, right? So I just don't want to shortchange consultants' work, um,
Absolutely not.
going into the future.
And I don't wanna underrepresent what Taylor and the planning board manage. You know, if it's like sort of eighty thousand dollars in for consultants, eighty thousand dollars out, but we're managing two hundred thousand dollars worth of consultant projects because half of them are partnerships that aren't in our budget, I don't wanna underrepresent that.
So when the FinCom does their annual review of each department's budget, there's, um, a very lengthy interview, question, answer on that, that each person from the FinCom assigned to each department to re, to do undertakes with either the chair or a subgroup of the whole board or the whole board, I honestly don't know their procedure. Um, but it's very detailed and there's a lot of questions and they wanna know all the things that, that well, they, this is an opportunity for us to communicate all the things that you've talked about, which is what, that our impact as a board exceeds our budget. And how so? Um, and can it be quantified? Is that what you mean?
Carrie?
Sure. Yep. I'm smiling at the telephone line that's now zero. I'm assuming that's like maintenance of a landline.
It's zero, it's zero for every department and every department still has it in there.
I mean, you're dealing with, this is a, this is a report off of an enterprise software program that's shared by the whole town. Right, so just because I can't tell what C Y P, well, can, current year percent used, I can just decipher, but going over to the right, there was all, I mean, just because I don't know what they mean, doesn't mean that other people don't.
Yeah, so where, where we're, I mean, basics, where we're overspending, where we're underspending, where we're over or underrepresented for total activity. And then, you know, where we're you know, we should be looking for, you know, or where we could fill in with grant out, whatever, that kind of stuff.
Right, right. But a lot of times, the grants that come at the result of the work of either the planning department and or the planning board don't come to the planning department and the planning board, they come to the operating department that we got the grant for. Like, if we did, if we got a grant for the D P W for their, their, their tree work, it would go into the D P W tree budget. We would just simply be have, we would have a, an anecdotal report of grants that we facilitated this year. Which would be great.
So I, I think that, I think that I have at least enough information now to kind of make the next step of revisions. Um, but this is probably something that we're gonna have to, I'm just giving everyone a warning, this is probably something that we're gonna have to look at.
On the twenty.
As a, you know, as, well, as even as individuals before then, right? Because we, we need to, you know, there, there is an upcoming deadline for when we want, uh, when this needs to go in. And so I'll, I'll clarify it, um, and re, re, reorganize it based off this conversation. The two things that I wanna leave you with, which are the most, I, I think are the most important, is we were given eighty thousand dollars for professional services this year, which far exceeds what we've gotten before. And as I understand it, FinCom kinda made it sound like that was a one-time deal and they're not gonna do it again. Um, if we look back to previous years, forty five is the normal for the last several years. And before that, thirty was, closer to thirty was normal. So we go all the way back to twenty, twenty eleven, we were getting thirty, we're getting forty five just last year. So we have an opportunity to say, these, these are the plans that we have done over the last few years, this is how much it costs, this is how much we'll need. So that's the first, uh, the first major one for me, and the other one is in salaries. We, we separate salaries between permanent and part, uh, permanent and temporary. My salary is less than what Brian's was because of our step, whatever, our, our steps. We have the opportunity to hire a assistant town planner, we will have to ask for more money in, in, um, in, 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 yeah, this, in the, in the permanent section. But the gap will be much smaller than when it was requested last time. So it is something that I'm gonna advocate for, it's something that Beth has already told us she's gonna advocate for. Um, and so, uh, uh, keep in mind, as we look at this, um, adding an assistant planner salary to this, and I can give you the exact number uh, for what that is, I'll add that to the sheet, because we already, it's already a set, it's already in the, it's already a salaried put position, so I can put that in here so that you can see it. Yeah, those are the two main things for the next, for the immediate future, looking at, into this.
If it's any help to the planning board, I have the footnote from Brian Zekely on what, how we got to the eighty thousand. Um, and it's, it was communicated, or you can't, I have to take it off blur, hold on a second. It was communicated by way of this red comment on the right side of a spreadsheet. Right, and, and one time the spreadsheet got folded over and the comment got cut off because it didn't, they didn't do wrap text in, in the, in the cell formatting. But the eighty thousand is the following, one, two, three, four, five numbers. Five thousand for the website. Thirty thousand for the I L district. Thirty thousand for phase three of North Main Street. Five thousand for section three A, for M B, M B T A three A rezoning. Um, and ten thousand contingency. And now here we are, um, uh, half, almost halfway through the year. And we know, because at the very beginning of the year, we determined that because three A is such a elephant in the room, it's gonna be such a massive undertaking to create compliance and then get it voted on. Um, that we would not spend thirty thousand dollars on I L district consultants this year, even as we keep that project alive on the community level. So this red line here was the guess that went into the eighty thousand. And when Diab was called upon by the FinCom to justify our work, it was, um, largely on the basis of, I mean, justify the number, it was largely on the basis of North Main Street and three A. And then some of the other small things, like getting work done on our, our, our website and having a contingency. Um, but I don't think it was understood, and I, I, I think they understood that we were gonna use the money on, on those two main projects, not the three main projects. And so that's the level of detail that the FinCom will drill into and ask for.
You're leading the meeting, Sally.
Okay, well, as far as.
I guess it sounds like a good report.
It sounds to me like we've covered all the agenda items.
Yeah.
So we can entertain a motion to adjourn? Do you, do you have any thoughts before we do that?
I, I move it, we adjourn.
Hold a second that.
Roll call vote. Nick?
Aye.
Uh, Eching?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I, Sally, say aye. So, okay, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Nancy, for taking great minutes, you always do. And we will review your minutes for the, at the next meeting, the ones that were submitted for this packet.
Thank you, and Cam.
Everybody.
Good night.